Going to order the number of reports will be for August 16, 2021. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Holliday.
Present.
Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Mr. Bennett.
Present.
Mr. Hawke.
Here.
Ms. Baldwin.
Here.
Mr. Reddick.
Here.
And Mr. Cole.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Mrs. Kennedy. Would you please stand and decide whether to leave this? The President, Mr. Collins, of the United States Department of Public Health, always stands. One nation under God, indivisible, infinite. Thank you. I would like to turn this over to School Committee member Steve Cole, who would like us to take a moment and remember that how objective is Stone.
Thank you, Mayor Holliday. I respectfully ask for a moment of silence to remember Mr. Jeffrey Stone, who passed away on August 4th, surrounded by those he loved dearly. Jeff was the son of the late Michael J. Stone, and is survived by his fiancee, Alicia Ally McMahon, his mother, longtime New York City school educator, now retired Susan Riley Stone, and his sister Jamie Stone Courier, as well as beloved nephew Cashman, cousins Brianna and Brady. Member of the NHS class 1999, Jeff was a decorated student athlete, earning letters in football and hockey. He continued to prevail while on the gridiron at Colgate University. He graduated in 2003, earning a BA in Education and Environmental Geography. While Jeff enjoyed a successful career in the pharmaceutical and biotech industry, his clear pride shined brightly through his tenure as an assistant hockey coach. Jeff always looked for ways to help NHS, often through his involvement in numerous NHS charitable programs. Jeff was a very giving person, always being there for you with no questions asked except other than, what do you need and how can I help you? Garrulous yet gentle, Jeff displayed warmth and kindness through being genuine and dependable. Along with having an infectious laugh, a smile would light up a room. All those who were blessed to know him will miss him, but the spirit and the gifts he shared will never be forgotten. Then we have a moment of silence for Mr. Jeffrey Stone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Turn this over to our vice chair, Mr. Callahan.
Thank you very much. Hello, everybody. It's our first meeting back. Exciting. Thought we'd all be out of this whole masking thing, so get through it and see what we can do. Consent agenda is going to be next. It's going to be a little bit different than in the past. I found out recently that we can combine all of the warrants and minutes into also, yes, sorry, I'm jumping ahead. Sorry, too excited for the consent agenda. Public comment is next. I'm going to read a little disclaimer about how we like public comment to happen. We've come to the part of the meeting where the School Committee invites members of the public to offer public comment. If you're remote, we ask that you raise your hand in the Zoom and we call in order half of the speakers that are in person. All speakers, respect, and follow guidelines. Speakers will be given two minutes to present their comments. Improper conduct and remarks will not be allowed. Speakers may offer objective criticism of school operations and programs that concern them, but the committee will not hear personal complaints about school personnel nor those against any member or members of the school community. We expect and encourage stability. Any remarks that are defamatory or abusive are always considered out of order and the chairperson may terminate that individual's privileges address on that basis. Additionally, we request that no names or any identifying information that would violate any student's right to privacy be offered as part of comments. Public comments are important to the committee and are welcome. Comments that are longer than two minutes may be submitted to the district office in writing for inclusion in the minutes to give. So is there anybody in the room that would like to make a public comment? Number one, you can come up to the front and say your name and address.
My name is Keith Daddings and Mr. Callahan, I think you and I have already talked, and Mrs. Baldwin, you and I have already talked. And I sent a proposal to each of you last week about publishing newspapers in elementary and middle schools. I think it's a lost opportunity in most schools. Districts don't do that. My experience is that students are perfectly capable with the right kind of guidance of putting out something that's interesting and important to them. But on the advice of Mrs. Baldwin and Mr. Callahan, they suggested I might go to the superintendent first or to the PTO first. And so I can, my intention is to do that, follow through on their advice. But I did say I would be at this meeting before I got that advice, so I just wanted to come introduce myself very briefly. I can elaborate on what I had in mind and how it might work, or I can come back at a later day because Mrs. Baldwin also suggested that I get on the regular agenda. So at your pleasure, I can come back and I think you meet again in two weeks.
Yeah, that would be great. I'll speak to the school committee, see how that will work out, and I'll be in touch.
Can I do one thing before that? And that's
Can I just step back a tiny bit because there's a camera there, so you won't be fully
Camera where?
Just keep, go back.
We just got a comment that's in great time, so.
It's an old one, too. What I'd like to do, just a good idea to get done with the rest of the business, but I'd like you to give you each a full copy of a six-page newspaper that I produced in a New York middle school. How many third graders did this? I think it was terrific effort. And I'll just read this to you and get on your agenda in two weeks.
Great. Thank you very much.
I think you already have, I'll work over at high school, but I'm pretty sure you already have it. These days, correct? Yeah, so this would be, I've done this at grade levels.
I'm holding the wires here.
These are third graders who did this. You didn't have to do that.
As a freelance journalist, it's better than some of the papers I work with.
I'm sorry?
As a freelance journalist, it's better than some of the papers I work with.
Oh, who'd you write?
I work for the fucking News, most of the papers and everything.
First you, first you.
Oh, yeah. We're not supposed to discuss anything.
We'll allow that.
Thank you.
I could discuss costs and everything else next when I see you in two weeks.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the person that would like to speak? That's probably good. Remember my place? Step back a little bit more, maybe the end of the table. There you go.
We have this little white block.
Yeah.
Okay, you need to do that. Cali Tanta, resident of the city, 29 Jefferson Street. I would like to speak to item four in your agenda on the DEC SE guidelines on reopening. First of all, as you are all well aware, this is contested terrain. Talk to people over the city, there are many different perspectives on this and to some extent, there's a lot of conflict over how we can see here. My only comment is I have to tell you how much admiration I have for the school district, for the teachers' union, and for the school committee in the way that you got through last year. And I think you have earned the right for the public to have confidence of how you are going to proceed now. So I'm just here, I want to hear what you have to say, both the district and the committee, and I wish you odd luck. I don't have any children in the school system. I'm not a virologist, I'm not an epidemiologist, but I think everyone in the city is interested in the welfare of our children and the welfare of teachers and staff. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anybody else in person that would like to speak? Okay, speaking none, I'm going to ask Jennifer Evans-Smith. Speak. If Evans Smith, if you could go, can you hear us?
Hi, my name is Jennifer Evans-Smith, and I'm a physician, anesthesiologist, proud to work at Anna Jakes. I live in town and my son is in the fourth grade at the Mullen, but I'm new to public commentary. As a parent and a physician, I want every child to benefit from five full days of in-person learning for the upcoming school year. And to make this possible, parents need clear communication from the district about how we each individually can contribute to keeping the schools safely open. We have to fill out the screening tools and keep our kids home when we're sick. We have to test regularly and monitor community transmission. We have to share our vaccination status with each other, Pfizer 12-2020, and encourage those who have hesitated to do so now to protect our children who aren't eligible yet. Vaccines are safe and effective, and although it's somehow become a polarizing point of discussion, the science is clear on masks. They're also very safe and effective at reducing the spread of disease. Both the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics strongly support indoor mask mandates. So we're in the middle of our fourth surge in cases due to the Delta variant, which we know is significantly more contagious. We know that even fully vaccinated individuals can carry and transmit viral loads. And we're watching schools reopen in other parts of the country only to close, have rampant spread. And you know that children, but one in 200 who contract COVID will be hospitalized, and a significant percentage will have long-lasting symptoms. Hospitals are seeing unprecedented spread of non-COVID-related respiratory illnesses. And for all these reasons and more, I publicly and strongly support mandating masks in the Newburyport Public School buildings. And I want to commend the school system for having zero in-school spread last year. And I hope and believe with the help of parents, children, and good public health policies, we'll see the same great outcome this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Kennedy, that's 10 lines, three.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Joe Cheever. Mr. Cheever, can you hear us?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
You are off.
Okay. Yep, my name is Joe Cheever, 22 Goldsmith Drive. And I have a daughter in the fourth grade, coming into fourth grade this year. My wife and I have both emailed the superintendent with our remarks, so that can also be put into the record. But just want to tell you that we were in the remote academy last year. So coming into this year, there is quite a bit of anxiety that we have. Obviously, with our daughter unvaccinated, as everyone under the age of 12 is, and with immunocompromised folks in the family, just a lot of anxiety coming into this with the Delta variant and the more contagious strain of the COVID-19 in the community. So we appreciate the communication thus far, but would like to see the state's guidance be taken into account immediately and have some communication more immediately about what we're going to do and what our plan is going into this new year. The earlier we communicate that, the less anxiety we'll have going into this new year. Recommend that you take the CDC guidance, the American Academy of Pediatrics guidance, and really highly recommend and fully support all wearing masks, both vaccinated and unvaccinated, all being masked in the school year, especially from the start, and having some level of distancing, especially in the cafeteria. Fully support that and appreciate everybody's work thus far. Thank you.
Thank you. That we have no more hands up. Can I get a last chance to speak in public comment from anybody out there at home? Speaking none, we're to close the public comment period and move to the much anticipated consent agenda that I tried to get earlier. In the past, we've always done the warrants and minutes separately and voted on individually, but I've been told by those masks that if they are part of the consent agenda, we can vote at one time on a whole lot, which is great. So Mr. Cole, if you could read them in order and then standard motions were
All right, we have three, three lines. First warrant, I moved that the following named bills that the Druryport Public Schools amounted to the aggregate $22,342.54. You approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There were no conflicts. Second warrant, I moved that the following named bills that the Druryport Public Schools amounted to the aggregate $45,746.31. You approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts. The last warrant, I moved that the following named bills that the Druryport Public Schools amounted to the aggregate $449,788.98. You approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second, I would create a new motion.
Okay, I think that is the motion. You second it?
Yeah, I second.
You approve?
Yeah, I think, yeah, my discussion would be just probably the four of the next meeting, the form would probably be just total all the way down.
Sure. Good idea to me. Phil Littlehale, are you here? Not sound good to you?
I think you're
If we combine all the warrants into one total dollar amount, just say we have warrants that total X instead of reading them? Okay, great. Thank you. All those in there?
Hi.
Opposed? There are none. The warrants pass. Any minutes? I'm trying to track. We have no meetings. All right, excellent. I'm going to turn this over to the superintendent now for the discussion of the DESI guidelines for reopening schools. Superintendent Gallo.
All right, I'm going to go open the mic, so let all can hear us. First of all, thank you all very much. It is great to be back to start of a whole new school year. We did not anticipate some of the things that we're dealing with with this COVID and this new variant. But I think that we're looking at making decisions moving forward. I kind of broke this up into three different areas. I think the first piece is really the increased cases of the Delta variant. Working with the Newburyport Health Department and just getting some information. The cases in August have already doubled. In July, it was only 12 cases throughout the month. In the first 10 days of August, there were up to 21 cases of the Delta variant. The breakthrough cases are on the rise, and as we all know, breakthrough of fully vaccinated individuals still acquiring this Delta variant. And we all know the CDC recommends anyone in substantial high-risk zone to wear a mask indoors regardless of vaccination status. And Essex County is collectively in that high-risk category, but they also incorporate some of the larger cities in Essex County, too. Over the past couple of weeks, Newburyport Public Schools and working with the city, we've seen more and more companies, local businesses requiring masking indoors along with doctors' offices and medical facilities. I'd like just to share one example of a decision that we made ahead of time. We brought a summer school. All summer school districts had the opportunity to go mask optional because we were making those decisions in June when cases were very low. Working with Captain Vicki and a medical advisory team, although we could have went mask optional for our summer school program, and we decided to wear a mask. We required masks for all staff and students. That was a good decision in hindsight because we did have a fully vaccinated staff member that's positive with the Delta variant. And we identified 15 close contacts of children at preschool ages. Because all staff and students were wearing masks, that Delta variant did not spread in school. But I think on a small scale, that was great news for us and kind of a scary time. I know our nursing staff has done a great service, but just there's a human side to this because we had to call some first-time parents. They had a first child, you know, four years old, and explain that they were close contact. And some of those parents were extremely worried, had anxiety, and were very emotional. So for us, we were very fortunate in that small case. As we all know, the trajectory of the cases in the Delta variant have been moving in the wrong direction. I think week after week, working with our medical advisory team and looking at the statistics and the department of health, we are seeing the increase in the Delta variant, both for the unvaccinated and vaccinated individuals. But if that restarts school on September 1st, our cases could look a lot different in the sense of moving, continuing to move in that wrong direction. Talking to a lot of our medical advisory team members, some of them will be speaking at the end of my presentation. A conservative approach and a cautious approach to open up school is, could be very beneficial. The second area is vaccinations. We are working with our department of health and also our nursing staff in looking at the high school rates, especially those students that are over 12, and looking at fully vaccinated students. So at this time, the information that we have, grade nine, we're at 64% of the students. Grade 10, we're at 64%. Grade 11, we're at 69%, and grade 12 at 74%. We anticipate over the last couple of weeks, with a lot of the information that has been going out on the Delta variant and really encouraging more and more students and adults to be vaccinated. Those numbers will change, and we expect those numbers will hopefully increase over the next few weeks before we open up school.
Mr. Gallo, can I ask you a question real quick?
Sure.
How do you know what those numbers are? Like, for example, my kid's vaccinated, I didn't tell anybody. So how would you know?
We'll have Lauren McDonald come up and try to explain some of that data. It's state data that we can look at and show, I think at the end, kind of explain where we're getting those numbers. The other piece to that, too, I think when we open up school with a lot of our forms and speaking with parents, we'll be able to probably be more willing because she has some of that information with us, it'll be more accurate numbers.
I guess that's where I was going, like, are we going to just ask?
Yes.
People to show cards or something?
We're going to have any more, I think, concrete data of the students sitting in front of us. So right now, at high school, our number is at 68%. 501 students out of the 75 have been vaccinated. And at the end of my presentation, we do have Dr. Sue, Mike Gallant, and Lauren McDonald will be able to answer any more specific questions from school committee. As we all know, we do not expect students under the age of 12 to be able to have the vaccine until sometime later this year or maybe begin next year. And so that's also a concern, I think, for this district. Additionally, recent CDC research suggests strong evidence that vaccinated people can spread the Delta variant. But what we're going to continue similar to some of the speakers here on public comment is have a multi-layered approach to prevention. In addition to a masking, we implement the CDC VESD recommendations on later COVID. We're going to be implementing a two-component testing program that Ms. McDonald has committed on behalf of the Newburyport Public Schools, which is systematic testing. Now, obviously, we're going to encourage all students that have symptoms to stay home if they're feeling sick. However, the student develops symptoms in school, then we can implement systematic testing to be used. This is the RAP test. Results are ready within 15 minutes. If the student has minimal symptoms and the test is negative, they may be able to remain in school. School nurses will make this determination. The other component that we have is a second phase of test and stay. This process will allow students that are considered close contacts with a person who's tested positive for COVID-19 while at school to stay in school if the student is showing no symptoms and has a negative test. So instead of quarantining like we did last year for 10 days, these students can remain in school. We utilize the RAP test for five days, and the students will stay in school. Students participate in the test and stay at that center for at least five days. We also are going to observe the social distancing when we can, when it can be implemented. We do want to maximize all of our fashion space and furniture when necessary, and students will have more of a regular lunch and snack time experience than they did before. Our ventilation systems, as the Berkom did last year, are running operational. They've done a great job with that. We'll once again have our cleaning protocols in place, and then in-school hygiene will also be, hand hygiene will also be part of our system. So I think for us at this time, with the cases on a long trajectory and rising, we're recommending basically beginning the school year similar how we ended the school year, where regardless of vaccination status, students and staff will mask indoors. This will allow us to continue with the full-person learning for the district, so we'll reduce the number of potential close contacts and create an environment that's supported by all students pending five days daily in school. Currently, right now, the guidelines on transportation is all students are required to wear masks on buses. And then for us, any outside activity, recess, et cetera, will be a mask optional. And for the student athletes at this time, the MIAA has not released guidelines for sports. So our recommendation is really basically no change considering from last year to this year. And we would open up school with students and staff being masked. And then we have, I think it's more time to monitor the Delta variant, monitor the statistics, monitor the vaccination rates, especially at high school, grades nine and 12. And then we can always be in some of those restrictions down the line. So at this time, we have Mike Gallant and
Yes, I can answer a question. Last year, preschool and kindergarten kids were not wearing masks.
No, they weren't.
They weren't, so we'll be this year as well.
Correct. So there really would be, if you look how we ended last school year, we had Paul and Carson through about six weeks. We did on outside activities, you know, physical education, any activities outside of school's mask optional recess. But I think we ended the year on a very positive note. All we're saying is to begin the school year, how we ended the school year on a positive note. And then that gives us more time to work with our medical advisory team and then also the department of health and really monitor a lot of those different areas. Monitor vaccination rates for all the students and staff, especially at high school, and at the same time, get up-to-date information from this agency, VESD, and other agencies. But I do have, if you want, Lauren McDonald and Mike Gallant are in person. And then we also have Dr. Sue, who's on Zoom call, the school committee, or anyone that has further questions for that.
I have a question about the social distancing. Just what is the plan with social distancing, especially where it pertains to eating in the cafeteria?
So right now, we're going to have Mike Gallant and Lauren McDonald. We're also going to, instead of having the six-foot spacing, because students will be wearing masks, we'll be able to maintain different spacing at each table, and then also utilize kind of the system we used last year, where half the students would have recessed first, then half the students eat, and then we flip-flop. So we're going to maximize this, what we were talking about, maximize all of our furniture, maximize all of our space to maintain a safe distance. The new guidelines around eating have changed, so we're utilizing some of those guidelines and recommendations as we're implementing. After tonight's meeting, I will be sending out a engagement to all families and we'll cover this thing. I'm not sure if you want to
Yeah, I'll just also add to that, you know, as we did last year, we'll take a walk through each school, look at the various populations of each school, because of course it changes. And the goal is to distance out as much as possible. The guidelines the superintendent did say have changed a bit. But you know, the good news is that I think based on what all of the administrators administrators at all the schools did, I think we're gonna be in pretty good shape to be able to maintain as much of that maximum distance as, as we did last year, which is around the six-foot mark, um, as, as we possibly can. And, uh, and the team did a wonderful job last year in, in managing that. That's probably one of the hardest elements of being able to navigate this course and, uh, you know, unfortunately, we wouldn't want all this experience, but, um, I think they've had a lot of experience to, to navigate through it.
Thank you.
I have one question for the superintendent, and this is a general comment. We asked, uh, superintendent, are we gonna be doing the daily symptom checker again? Or is, or should we be doing that?
Yeah, so.
Older kids did it themselves upon entry in the building, and then parents did it.
Right. We did talk about that, and I think we landed on, in email every night, we each were to line up the symptoms and invite them up there. Um, students should not be sent to school with any of those, those accommodations. Um, before we, rather than have, um, the parent have to fill out that, um, you know, form every single day. We wanted to just make it easier for parents, and also easier for, um, people who are younger than us. It was, it hired someone to actually, we talked about that last year. Um, and I think, um, what I heard was that the pandemic, people, you know, weren't doing that, so. So we figured, um, sending out every night, and we'll sometimes, um, not continue to, I mean, the email every night, but it's just a reminder. And, um, let us know.
If I could just ask you to, um, inject a little bit more.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Because we sometimes have a challenge for people at home listening, so that, I know my hearing is going, so I didn't want to be so.
Yeah, that's.
If people at home would have the problem.
That has a problem.
And then, and then the, the one comment I had, you know, we talked about the supplemental meeting, and everything's great. I mean, the situation is awful, but, you know, everybody is great in this. I, I wanna ask the superintendent, that regardless of the MIAA, that we require student athletes to do the same things that the theater kids are allowed to do. If the MIAA is less restrictive, they follow our more restrictive things, just to be clear to all the kids. Put them all on the same, kind of terrible quote, as it were. Uh, I would ask that the, anybody, Dr. Sue, everybody in the med team, you know, not being, no medical experience at all, but when I read that the CDC says that Essex County is huge, is doing poorly, and a city like Lynn has no bearing on us. But Beedruck, which is over an invisible line, has a lot to do with our community, that we try and keep all of our directives hyper-legal, you know, frightening the bucket and the surrounding things. And I would also request that, uh, the mayor at Department of Health, call their counterparts on a regular basis, Beedruck, and, you know, report back with those numbers, the med team. I know Duquette has a not very great, uh, setup, and they report on a, um, regional level, like Lakes Region or Mountains. That doesn't help us when many people, if they're gonna see, we got a weekly basis shop, um, of course, the those who Duquette replaced and report on a daily basis. That's, that's my only request for all of the team. Thank you.
Oh, there, oh, um, I just, last year, we joined the pool testing, and we were able to do, um, different groups, different classes, we were able to, you know, keep. And given for several, I believe, five, four, and three, and four, so we're not gonna do that for she and I, I understand.
So that's an option, Dussey, and it's a, it's a, but, um, three options, so you can enter into one, two, or all three, or not, some districts aren't choosing to be testing at all. Um, we discussed it as a group, as a matrix, and made it on the systematic testing, because we thought that was important. To, uh, make sure that anyone who should be in school, it was set home if they're positive, you know, and want to call parents and just go the analogies. Say, the open later, and if there's something increased, then, um, I'd report that, but.
Can we talk a little bit more about that? Because I understand that when we find for the virus, for the people get a positive test.
Correct.
So, we'll, we'll, can talk about that. So what about the test?
Oh, I, I, you're, I can tell you about maybe the test and stay. So the test and stay is that we're actually going to a webinar on this tomorrow, so that's just something that I know we're not, we haven't clearly gotten the complete information about, which is, that's kind of what we're not laughing, and tomorrow afternoon. And, um, but what we have heard, this is a, it's a, it's a combined program, CIC is going through a new, uh, provider for the testing, so we test on, you know, in the nurse's office. This is for me. So this is symptomatic testing, if someone shows up, um, to school, they've got coughing, so just send them in. They can test, they can test, they test for right there. Um, if they're, you know, in that moment, maybe they're a part. Send them home with that, with certain symptoms, certain symptoms. Um, so without the discretion of the nurse, to all the parents, get the histories, if they don't want, take your test, and then that's. But if we get a positive right there, if they can go home, or a PCR test to, um, verify that, you know, we want PCR. But the test and stay option is someone becomes positive in the classroom, or was in the classroom, there is a continuous period, which is either two days before or the symptoms start, or two days before they are, had their positive test, um, without symptoms. So if they were tested on a Saturday, they were at school Friday and Thursday, you have to go back to those two days to see who had close contact with that one student. Um, Dussey has changed their guidelines on what is a close contact in school. The floor is to keep students in school, whether that's something else, you know, between six foot, outside without masks, was a whole, um, new protocol on who is a close contact in school. It's different from who is a close contact in public. So that's a change. So say that student was positive on Saturday, we look back on Friday and Thursday, there were maybe seven close contacts. Um, and likely they won't be because of the new, uh, definition of close contact in school. Those children can then come into the office. If they have no symptoms at all, they can get tested for five days in a row, if they're negative.
If a student don't test positive, though, you have to send them home, then they have to have a negative test before they can come off to school.
No, if they test positive, they have to isolate for ten days. So if you test positive on a, on a rapid, or PCR, you can actually take, do PCR to, to verify, because sometimes the rapid tests are later than the PCR. And sometimes they'll happen, they are the same.
So they're out for ten days?
They're out for ten days.
Then they come back?
Yeah. So if you're positive, you, um, you have to be out for ten days.
And it's, it's the identified close contact that are non-symptomatic that we can test for five days.
Yeah.
So if you recall, if someone was tested positive and we identified five to seven close contacts, they would also be out for the ten days. But the new regulations with, uh, testing, now we want to adopt, those seven students that may have been considered close contacts, we get the rapid test for five days. If they stay symptomatic free and test negative, they maintain their presence in school, they maintain their symptoms. The, looking at, I think, these more specific tests for us and pool testing in the beginning, I think, was, uh, it was beneficial to a certain degree, but after doing it for a while, you're, you're only pooling, uh, a certain amount of students. So what we decided, what the medical advisory team would be a lot easier to maximize our resources, um, with these two types of phase testing. Instead of, uh, random pool testing, we are now concentrating on students that's essentially systematic, um, and then concentrate on, um, testing potential close contacts to keep as many students in school as we can.
And I feel with the masks and, um, distancing as much as possible, these testing options are kind of fine. They help them with the health.
Three step days?
Um, we, um, we were very successful last year, I think, in managing this, schools, but we're also, everybody was flying by the seat of their pants. And my question is a more optimistic question, and that is, at some point, by the end of the year, beginning of next year, we will be getting a green light for vaccinations for kids under twelve, and also the second bench bike is gonna be, we'll get a green light for some category of booster shot. And I'm wondering, I know that we tried to set something up in terms of vaccines at schools, and very chaotic, but that didn't happen. Um, and this is a question for the city as well, at least since January, I think. But are we gonna try to, um, put things in place so that we can jump on that if we can, and provide some vaccination through schools if we can?
Right, so why, we're not all, we did, you know, granted, we were trying to bring, uh, vaccines with our ambulance service to, particularly. And then there was, you know, supply was the issue, demand was high. But being able to open up our regional clinic, and then we did it for schools, you know, that close to fifty thousand shops in these parts in these regions, we did really well between the center that was happening here too. So I don't see any reason why we couldn't organize, um, you know, them to that. We, you know, we have the volunteers, we have the system down pat. It worked incredibly well, and was very soon in terms of, you know, to the vaccine, like, ultimately tomorrow we could set that up again.
Right, and we had talked about that, and then largely came up, where everybody's on board, and all the stakeholders are willing to come pitch in and make sure that happens, either after the first one starts, or like, you know, to get it.
And, and just to, um, if people are listening, so since the Fourth of July holiday, um, you know, Lauren McDonald's done a great job. We've all been preparing, you know, you need to say worst-case scenarios, but that's what we've been doing. So we're ahead of the curve, I keep on getting this type of testing. The second piece that Ms. McDonald's already done is looking at, uh, vaccination. Um, having Newbury Court as, uh, be able with the.
Yeah, the mobile vaccine.
The mobile vaccination.
I find the mobile vaccine, um, and, you know, free of charge, they, um, will come and, um, to our site, I suppose, wherever we decide to do it, and vaccinate as many, um, students as we can.
Correct. So we have that in process. And I think working with Dr. Sue and Mike Allen, and also our medical advisory team. And the key is, I think, over the next few weeks, is to encourage as many of those high school students who are not vaccinated to get vaccinated, because there is a threshold at some point, much of what the data shows, much of the eighty-five or ninety percent of people within a community, then we can start reducing some of those, um, you know, restrictions. I know Dr. Sue really believes that how many Newbury Court families and students, especially grades nine to twelve, have really been, um, going up there getting vaccinated, and our numbers are pretty high, so it wouldn't take, uh, a lot to, uh, get us to a certain threshold. And that's kind of the work that we're doing with medical advisory, what is that threshold when we can start reducing some of these restrictions?
Um, I was gonna ask about the vaccine drive. Glad to hear that. I was gonna ask about incentivizing vaccines, because I think once we get the data, we might find that we're higher than sixty-four percent to talk about. Um, I'm hoping that staff that's involved in that percentage, so it's not just the kids, but, you know, we're not gonna offer vaccinations, but it'll be an eight bagel if you get in the lottery or something like that for Friday morning. Hoping with the most vaccines, I don't know. But, uh, so glad to hear about that. I was also gonna remind us, last year, one thing that the community continually asked for was, what's the threshold to bring us back? So I'm also glad to hear you're thinking about that. Um, might be thirty more kids, and we hit ninety percent, right?
Right.
I think all of these different types of testing are really interesting. We need a really nice flow chart to say, if this, your kid, this is gonna happen, yes, oh, good.
We're working on that as well.
Otherwise, you're gonna need like some sort of customer service hotline, right?
Yeah.
Um, I'll always say that I appreciate the idea and the emails, but if you ever wanna make sure that nobody reads your emails, send one every day. So, and I think, we gotta find a way, if that's gonna be our.
Yeah.
Reminder. Maybe like a banner at Athens instead, something.
Or posting it on the website, right?
Like, as, as much as we can. But yeah, something, but no one's gonna read the email, they're not. Nobody will ever read any of these emails again, so.
You have said, I will post it.
Little tax rate.
You're gonna probably see it, or, you'll probably see it and say, oh, that, you know it can.
Yeah, that's right.
But it, it will, then at least that will be the reminder.
Gmail will start setting it up. You become spam in Gmail.
And, and I think, or, I mean, the other, it's a, it is an actual mind, we test on how we do it, email every night. But I think a lot of times, you know, what, when the, you know, I, I'm sure we all have personal stories with someone who's been fully vaccinated come down with COVID, but a lot of the fully vaccinated, um, people that, the breakthrough cases that I know, they, they think, oh, it's just allergies, or shit, or cold. Now suddenly they got tested, it was COVID. So I think that, uh, a reminder like that, and, you know, if you have the sniffles or scratching throat, you know, it may not just be allergies or a cold, especially if you're vaccinated. So I think when we center our communication tonight, we'll be a lot more detailed for everybody, but understanding we'll have testing in place um, to rule out, uh, COVID, you know, uh, so I think that that's also a component, uh, of the game with Newbury Court. We'll have that testing running. So, but it is a reminder, if you have the sniffles or scratching throat, then it may not just be a cold, it could be a stealth in there.
I think we get back to an opportunity to weigh in, like, when you're on the call.
Dr. Sue, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to add and reiterate almost everything that was said. You know, I think we had a great year last year with zero transmissions, and the number one goal is to keep all the students in school full-time, you know, as much as possible. And, um, our approach to doing that is to try to be as conservative as possible to begin with. I, I think the one thing we need to know about the Delta variant, which was sort of alluded to by a few people, is really the rate of transmission is incredibly difficult for us to quantify just because a lot of those breakthrough cases are not being ca- captured, because people think they're just, oh, I have the sniffles, I have a cold. Um, and so, so the actual rates of transmission are, are probably much higher, particularly among those who are vaccinated than what we realize, or higher to some degree. And so when we're going into the school environment now, you know, we have the advantage of a lot of people being vaccinated, though we are more protected, there are fewer symptoms, and that really helps us, but this is more aggressive. Um, so, you know, we have a lot of things to balance, and, you know, I think starting the school and having mask mandates inside for everyone is, is the safest way to begin the year, um, and successfully have as many people in school as possible full-time.
Thank you. Somebody have something more questions for anybody?
I would just say, you know, when we're communicating with the school community as well, that, that we're really clear on the metrics. And, you know, last year, I think it was easier because, you know, I'm sure the community got to a certain color, I think we were all watching those come on every week. And I don't think this is gonna be the same, but I, I think people need to understand that it's not just what's going on in the report, it's, you know, but, but the number of vaccines, you know, the number of kids vaccinated, who are staff vaccinated, is part of it. But I think that, that, if we can tell that story and get that correctly, I think, you know, again, Dr. Sue, this is, number one goal should be that we all want our kids current. Uh, you know, I have three kids, I know they're gonna be devastated with the impact. But if, if that's gonna get them to school, then they're gonna understand that. But I do think there's gonna be expectations around metrics. I just think we have to have that third story, and, and whether it's every week, every two weeks, we'll probably revisit it, and I would, uh, for, uh, any for that.
I, I would agree, and Mark, our medical advisory team, Mike Allen, Dr. Sue, and all of our people, uh, the metrics are a little bit different this year, because, as we said, we've got a lot of now students and staff vaccinated. I, we would agree with that development.
Can I say something? I just wanna say, I, I appreciate the metrics, but while we still have students that are.
Can I say something? I just want to say, I appreciate the metrics, but while we still have students that are unvaccinated, that really, truly have a vaccine for those younger kids, they're always going to be at risk as long as vaccinated people can transmit this virus.
I think it's a fair point, and they are still recruiting for the trials for the under twelve. And we know that it's usually about a three month lag where when they stop recruiting. And so even if you play that out, you're looking at that fast as probably. So just to calibrate those expectations, and I think that's part of where we do want to monitor this weekly. Like given all of the, we have more data that we have to have come in, we have to understand where the staff is with their vaccination rates, which I don't think we have a clear picture on yet. And then hopefully the goal is to unmask, but in the safest way possible. So I, I think that's communication, that's setting an expectation without over promising or under delivering is, is, I think, a part of what we've been trying to figure out as we go.
We're a little bit on the fringe of this discussion, but last year, the governor initially had a flu vaccine mandate that he pulled back on. We heard anything about flu vaccines this year and what that might look like?
The hospital is mandating, the hospital's mandate, we're all.
But I know like, like two weeks before, you know, or three weeks before the COVID announcement, you know, my son was out sick for six days with like a hundred degrees. We were like, well, probably wasn't the flu, right? But they called it flu B at the time. They said the flu had switched halfway through the winter. And so I don't know if we can get a flu vaccine, because they said it wasn't working. We didn't bother, but I just don't know if you guys heard anything about.
I haven't heard anything about mandates this year, and they pulled back on the mandate because of the numbers.
That's another reason to just keep them on.
And our numbers for flu, I think, prophecy, flu, common colds, any transmissible, these two. Stockless, so.
Conver and Marty were all going to be wearing masks, especially throughout the winter.
And this following, I just wanted to, just to make one point out, we would likely not open that new house. To the whole district, it would start with. We'll go to that, you know, that we want to protect those little kiddos who can't get vaccinated.
I believe that's the parents, anyway, we'll say don't say our own kids, we're the ones with kids here, so. I have a high school student and a middle school student, so it would be up to me to say, hey buddy, get masks, got a break or something. On the same line, Dave was asking, is it accurate if the FDA approved vaccine like for real? Then we mandate that kids have to get it if they're able to go to school on diesel vaccine, that, how that works?
That's the state mandate.
But I've heard the reason we can't do that is because the FDA hasn't approved it officially, emergency, but it is approved. The NMR.
Yeah, the state would have to mandate that.
Somebody else have something to say?
Thank you guys again for nothing here. I was going to say goodbye to kids before they go to school.
Yeah, I have a motion to trump-tie everybody's comments. I'm happy to share that. Newbury Port School District will require masks for all vaccinated and unvaccinated staff and students at the beginning of the school year. And we will review data on an ongoing basis to assess needed changes to protocol.
I think.
Discussion, I have a discussion, I guess, that's a fine motion. I was thinking about this a lot and after the meeting last week and regular conversations with the superintendent. Last December, when we found out that there was a chance, when we came back from winter break, we may have to go fully remote because of people having traveled, all those things, the committee voted to empower the superintendent to make those calls whenever he saw fit with the advice of medical experts. I personally think that that empowerment still exists and we're still in the middle of COVID. And I think that doing this, you know, having kids wear masks or other types of measures to prevent transmission of the virus is an operation. It's not policy, yes. It's not one of our three pur views, in my view. It's not part of superintendent's budget or policy. So if we have already given the superintendent the power to make that call without having to result in emergency meetings for us to say, oh, shoot, you know, yes, we have to close for two days, I don't know if we want to continue on that empowerment directive too. But I'll end, everybody.
I think we actually do make a decision, I'm saying, but I think in order to demonstrate our solidarity with the administration, the health experts, that we as a school community are coming together in full support of what the regulations are and voting to start the school year with, you know, also Matthew.
I mean, I have no problem. I'm just trying to make it a thing because if all of a sudden in three weeks, something changes, we're going to do this over and over and over again. Having said that, whatever happens with this vote, I would request that the policy people wrap something up that is a policy that something like this powered up our policy, but it does in effect make these types of decisions along with the superintendent, however that comes up with the policy. Sorry, Dr. Sue, you didn't say something.
No, I, I agree with Mayor Holliday. I think that we need to demonstrate to the community our support of the ethics of this. In regard to seeing, ultimately, our decision, like to recommend, it is a strict. And that, that's why I drafted the motion the way that I did. I think it's important for the community to see us say yes. This is what we would go through.
Can you read it again?
Newbury Port School District will require masks for all vaccinated, unvaccinated staff and students at the beginning of the school year. And it will review data on an ongoing basis to assess needed changes to protocol, possibly change. I wanted to make sure that, that the data review is ongoing, whether it's one week or two weeks. True situation. And that is, that is as last year, that's going to help us decide what we.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I guess the question, go ahead, Steve.
So, not to, but we need to find this data.
Sir, I'm happy to take a friendly amendment to the parliament.
Is there anything?
And administration. Medical advisory team.
Really?
Yes, I will.
We're not going to review the data. We're going to review the recommendations of the medical team and the central office staff.
So I'm with medical advisory team and the administration.
Can you read it again?
Sir, the Newbury Port School District will require masks for all vaccinated and unvaccinated staff and students at the beginning of the school year. And that medical advisory team with the administration will review data on an ongoing basis to assess needed changes to protocol.
Yeah, that's awesome. Who would it help?
I think a part of the medical advisory.
Yeah.
I mean, I would say we're really just being consistent. Some schools will be wearing masks all the time, so I mean, I know. I didn't school, it hasn't been that case, it hasn't. But we stay consistent.
We're getting ahead of the curve.
Yeah. The daily person who has a mask gets it.
I didn't know if you used outside. And are required to wear masks.
Oh, yeah.
I was, I was going to say, we're going to have to draft a policy. I think we're going to need to spend a little bit of more time wordsmithing and adding things like. So I guess that's why any policy would just be, this is what we're going to start with the year, or we're going to start the year following the recommendations of the medical team and superintendent. And that's, just leave it at that.
It's not really a policy.
It's a policy, so much of the motion for tonight, like.
It's going to be a crucial, I'll support more of the recommendations.
So, Matt, yeah, however Bruce, you want to write that, but were you saying make it so more simple, being at the beginning? And then policy drafts a more detailed.
Correct, and something going forward, like we are going to, we are going to listen to and vote upon the support of health recommendations coming from the, the health team and superintendent that will include things like, you know, accommodations for age groups, indoor and outdoor, eating versus not eating sauces, like that sort of style. The policy would do that, so today, I think we should just say that we're going to support the recommendations for masking at the beginning of the school year.
I, I think, yeah, that's right. I think Bruce's thing is fine, it doesn't go too far, it's just a film. Good to go, I think.
Okay.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I don't know.
So the motion passes. Thanks, everybody, for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
And Dr. Sue, thank you. Thanks, Dr. Sue. All right. The next item on the agenda is the potential school calendar adjustment for the year coming up. That is essentially moving pre-K K's Thursday at school, one day over into Wednesday.
Yeah.
So we have our, what, eight?
September eight.
Just September eight because of Rosh Hashanah?
Correct.
It's pretty simple, pre-K K only, everything else the same. I'm going to make a motion.
I can.
We're doing it?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None of them, the school calendar adjustment passes.
Are there, are there other? We have a list of holidays for the right and the weekends, just to be aware of.
She'll have asked, I think that's probably a policy thing to find out. Get a generalist, I mean, your, your calendar will auto populate, but we necessarily don't work.
Thank you. I don't know, she'll do it. But I am like.
Sure, she's not in birthday too, they are. The next item is the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two meeting schedule.
Yep.
Moving to January one only Tuesday because Thursday, because of the inauguration, the mayor's theme spirit report over there. Back to town to have a ceremony. People were moving the meeting to Tuesday night in January. Making a motion? Second. Any discussion about that?
We've been talking for quite some time about some of the finer events in our calendar. I don't want to hold this for a while, so I'm not going to, but I think you guys moving forward should think about moving that. I feel like, also, we're already out of August, and I feel like we're already behind.
Yeah, I know.
Start stacking up, the school year starts flying by.
Superintendent, we can just sit down, think about those things, but then, and the government's coming up, the second one, September maybe, and say globally what those all are over a year and get it all, know that.
Okay, what are you talking about specifically? For example, I, I personally think that during the August meetings every year, there should be a discussion about what the superintendent's goals and the district goals are. So that when the school year starts or the superintendent starts the initial PD for the year, the goals are already in place, like we can start thinking about our goals. The staff know how to write their own personal teaching, professional growth goals, excuse the technicals, and those things. So now, we're attempting to start the school year without knowing what, we haven't even evaluated Sean from last year, much less heard what the goals are going to be for next year. So I, I think, we've been talking about this for a long time now. I think we can say in August, very first August meeting, this is going to have to be on the agenda. You know, the same way that like, you know, the mayor has put the joint meeting with the city council and the school committee sometime in November, give the initial budget review, you know it's coming, you plan for it. On the guys, I think there are some certain things along the way of the year that we just need to start saying, this has to happen now because otherwise good practice, otherwise we're behind.
Yep. So I imagine, so we, with our new leadership team, that's something that we actually spoke about today, district goals. We have our retreat with our leadership team on Wednesday and Thursday of this week. So the goal is to, when the teachers come out, district goals will be in place, ensure goals will be in place. And also work with teachers, our goals that tie in to the district. That's something that.
And not that we don't trust you guys implicitly, but one of, one of our very few jobs is to oversee the work you're doing. And if you create goals in the vacuum without us, it, it sort of loses its legitimacy.
Session, all is in favor of changing the meeting schedule for the school meeting?
Aye.
Aye. Superintendent's report, Mr. Geller.
All right. School, we started talking about that. So school choice right now, let's give you a quick update, three, four. We have zero slots remaining. Grade six, we have two slots remaining, grade seven, zero slots. Grade nine, we have seven slots. And in grade twelve, we have four slots. So the total slots that we allocated, we have thirteen slots left. Overall, we filled to this date twenty-eight students throughout the district school. Those are, those are new students coming in?
Correct.
Twenty-eight, and those are the slots that are open at this time. Our, you know, once again, I just really want to credit the team that I have over there for all their work in the summer. Our grants, our title one and meeting grant title two are ready to be submitted by the end of this week. So I'd like to thank the way ahead of time right now, Phil and Phil Doyle and Ms. Tepolito for all their work on that. Our ESA two grant is being completed and submitted, and we're beginning to purchase against that. And as part of S R three, we'll be sending out a survey to our school community, to parents, students and teachers on that grant and grant funding and different priorities. Ten question survey to get feedback from the community before we submit our S R three funding. So we're in great shape with our grants and our finances, and we want to make the team for that. Also, our hiring update, we'll be welcoming thirty-one new staff members across the district. As you all know, our administration additions, and maybe I'll just go through the list for the community, but Tom Abrams is our district literacy coordinator. Elise Kamal will be the moment not special education team coordinator. Teresa Fitzpatrick will be our resident special education team coordinator. Lisa Furlong is now our director of communication. Lisa Furlong is now our Director of Communication and Instructional Technology. Lisa Marie Eppolito is our Assistant Superintendent. Phil Little Hale is our new business manager. You heard from Lauren McDonald, our Director of Health Services. Uh, Michael Monroe is our new Assistant Principal at the Brazilian. Tim Partz is our new Bureau Out Coordinator. Uh, Leah Holloway, uh, is the President Early Childhood Coordinator. She was moved in from the team coordinator to that role in at the north. Uh, Mr. Marcos is the north interim principal and Alyssa Gagao is the north interim assistant principal. Um, and both obviously know many of the students' families at the north in the futures. And we feel that will be a smooth transition until we open up that position, uh, in January. Um, Lisa Maria Eppolito and her staff have worked on, um, the, uh, induction program, mental induction program. I think school committee, you all have been invited to one of those days. I just want to thank several staff members for all their work. For that, special thank you to Judy Webster, Nancy Codge, Chris Piscios, Joan Chan, Steve Cassell. Michael Eaton is also going to be part of the mentoring program, uh, and Lisa Marie Eppolito. Um, and also Julie Zelinski, who's been working behind the scenes for organizing these days. Um, the mentees or the new staff will have two days of an orientation into the culture of Newburyport. And then spend August twenty seventh with their mentor to answer any final questions before they start working with students. Mentor training will be conducted on August twenty fifth by our mentor leaders. I also like to thank them, Shannon Osgood, Lori Salago, Tim Mahan, Pam Vecchio and the A M's. Uh, Mrs. Eppolito will put out a call, uh, put out a call this summer asking veteran teachers if they were interested in becoming mentor leaders and we actually got a slew of teachers that were very interested. More teachers than slots for Phil. I just think that speaks the caliber of our veteran Newburyport staff that will. Um, you're all invited to the breakfast, uh, from eight fifteen to nine, won't be to make it on May, I mean, the, some hardy. That's the school year, um, on August twenty fifth. And then the mayor will open up and just say a few words to that drawing staff.
Excellent. Thanks, Superintendent. Has anybody met? Bruce, you want to say anything about the evaluation for, um, for that?
Evaluation, um, has been compiled, um, like tribute to the all the comments made by school committee members, population of the scores that were offered. And an executive summary that just puts that behind us. Um, and we will be, um, doing that evaluation, I assume, at the next meeting. Evaluation will be definitely covered. It's popcorn now. Pretty, uh, I, I, I think that I, I really appreciate it. There's really wonderful feedback.
That brings us to new business and superintendent. I believe you have something. Hell, you guys want to go over?
And this is, this is just quick and maybe put on the next school committee agenda. I just wanted. Uh, Mr. Little Hale, uh, we got in bills and warrants. Uh, M G L, uh, chapter forty one, section forty six allows uh, multiple member bodies, including boards of selection, to delegate a single member. Authority to you approve bills and warrants with payment. Um, so as you all know, we're requesting four signatures every, uh, billing time. And you, as a board, would have the ability to nominate one signature. So you went out scrambling. You get four signatures. And I just, I gave you all the laws that, you know, had that and Mr. Little Hale. Uh, in his previous districts, um, the school committee from the board of selection, uh, went that route. But I just wanted to provide that to you all and maybe in the agenda for the next.
Like, was there also talk about it being electronic instead of having to physically be there inside? Correct. Was that a thing, Little Hale, that it could be an electronic signature?
Well, the student is looking at the web signature, there's a lot of, uh, past physical modernization act. Really what it's a trust issue, we don't, someone trying to get, or we come down and sign the warrants and give bills. I mean, you can also give every, go for, but I, I'm not sure of the flow yet in terms of the warrants, what we will speak, how that goes in terms of timing. So if you have one person who's designated, that one person can sign off and then that person is required to report back for the next meeting of the bills that were signed off. The other option may be go electronic signature, they sort of want to be able to do that. I think we go with the one signature. It's really close times. They go for breaks where we don't have the two meetings, just to make sure we can get bills in on time down and send it off. The last thing I want to do is have lots of phone calls from our vendors calling because we got delays and bills. Ideally, at some point, we like to go electronically. Um, yes, you know, I, people always say it's kind of funny. I hate paper. You know, like get away from it as much as you can, but I think it's a first step just to make things a little smoother and our, my staff. Uh, going a bit out of their minds, trying to get signatures down and make sure you get them all. I'd like at least put out to, at least maybe folks spoke, they have the one person sign off. And again, you can do that as needed. You don't have to do it all.
Like, Steve, can we do a in column meeting before the next committee meeting with Mr. Little Hale so we can sort out anything like that?
We were supposed to have a finance meeting tomorrow, but of course I didn't realize that. So, um, I think we follow the schedule.
Thank you. And I believe that, uh, for each speaker.
I got one more. I have money on to delay this. No, that's too low. I just want to, this, you know, cut off the press here. Congratulations to Newburyport. Now I knew all star team would Sunday won the Bay State Tournament of Champions, defeating Tupsbury. By scoring five to four to win the championship in dramatic fashion. Aaron Armstrong had the game winning tip in the bottom of the sixth inning. Uh, so congratulations to the entire team, manager Christian, coaches, John Hard, Ray, Artan, Ian, Paris, Rome.
How did the motion go there? Second? All those in favor? Thank you, guys, everybody.